Good afternoon. We'll officially call a meeting order and thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
No public comments. Number three on the agenda item, and those of you that may not be aware, on my far-left rear corner back there is documentation in regards to information about this meeting today. Number three is the workshop, goal-setting and priorities. What's the pleasure of the board? How do you want to go forward?
Mr. Mayor.
David, I wanted to ask you just, what do you need to get out of this meeting today?
Ten get-done-before-the-end-of-next-year items.
Thank you.
And I've, that probably sounded facetious. It was not intended to, but, you know, goals and objectives, we've got three or four pages. If we could distill it down and prioritize, it would make our life a lot easier, not only setting up the budget, but understanding of what a more tangible and realistic work plan we need going forward for the upcoming fiscal year.
So I think I heard you say that possible prioritizing, right?
Or consolidating and distilling too, because there's...
Can I explain how I did it to you?
Sure, please.
I just, some of you had the same topic, but different items. So the topics are like the solid dot, and then underneath, excuse me, underneath them would be each individual person. So they might not all match up exactly, because they're individual people. But you want to maybe come up with, actually, what you want for that line item, too.
Okay. I thought that was great, because it grouped them logically. We all want to talk about a certain topic, but we have different ideas of what we want to get out of it. So I think that was very helpful.
So can I make a suggestion? Remember when we talked about what our, how we were going to go through this? We talked about must-do, should-do, and need-to-do. Maybe could we first go through the list and say whether it's a must-do, should-do, or nice-to-do, and that would help us see what floats up to the top? And then when we get all the must-dos and the should-dos, then we can see which one of them are the top 10?
And I only pick 10, because it's round and easy.
But then we would have it prioritized.
Now that the clerk has explained that, and it's consolidated, now there's still a whole bunch of items.
Yeah. Hey, David, you're looking primarily for things like CIP-type things. We have some issues... Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I'm just trying to get you to pull the microphones down.
Oh.
Well, I don't know if...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
There you go. All right. You're looking primarily for those things that might be like CIP items and things like that. In other words, we have monitor the hazard inlet situation, but that's, you know, that's a monitor thing. That's not really, I don't know how labor-intensive that is.
Well, we should probably pull that one out and talk about it some specifically, and, because there's a little bit more to it than just watching something and seeing if it's going to hurt you. I mean, there's, there's probably an adjective or an adverb we need to pull in that. But CIP items or programmatic work toward providing services.
Okay. Also, I guess I want to add on to what Tracy said for should-do, must-do, nice-to-have. We did come up with priorities: health and safety, providing core services, protecting property, providing amenities. And I think, I mean, I was looking through, I think we can categorize them that way, too, because that helps prioritize them in terms of health and safety being our top priority. Ones that address it should get higher priority. I tried to do it. It did well till the end, and then some of the general items just didn't really, weren't easy to put into a category like that.
Just want to start at the top and start running down them?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, do you want to lead this, or do you want, how do you want to help you organize it to throw back to us?
Oh, I'll, however you want. I can just take notes as you guys go along, or whatever you please with me.
Why don't we let you walk us down through it, if that's all right?
Sure. So the first one that you guys have on the list, we'll have on your list for you, is it's the full capital project plan and program. So the first one's stormwater. One of you put develop plans and specs based on stormwater study, and then we also have evaluate the, can I type in here? Evaluate the stormwater study recommendations and develop implementation plan, including funding.
So my assumption was that we have a stormwater study underway, and we will get recommendations when, sometime?
Chris, do you know when Michael will be wrapping up that study?
Okay, because I, I mean, I had one of those, but I think we're saying the same thing, which is see what that study comes up with in terms of recommendations, and see what the funding requirements would be to implement those recommendations, and then put that in the SIP.
Yeah, I understand that one.
So, so can I just, yeah, so I think we're just going to probably consolidate these, right? So I would say just, let's use the second bullet, because that's kind of more comprehensive. Everybody, that would be what we would have under stormwater. And that should, so Heather, can you help us keep track of, I mean, that, that would be a should-do in my book?
On the, the developing the plans and specs one, on the stormwater study, I think that's a second-tier accomplishment. The first one will be the evaluate, you know, the total programatics, but there will be a follow-on on developing the plans and specs for specific projects.
I'll tell you, that was mine that I put in, David, and I was thinking we would get this study. And if I understand, we would be looking at grants eventually for some of this stuff for the stormwater?
Yes.
So do we need plans and specs to move on to the grant phase?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay, that was my thinking there.
Well, let me, let me couch it this way. In talking with the Corps of Engineers, because that's who we're looking at for the stormwater funding, the 5113 program, the, the inclusion of our general reconnaissance is good enough for the first phase to get it funded. And then we'll have to go back in with plans and specs for project specifics.
Do you think we would get to that in this upcoming fiscal year?
Uh, it's probably going to take this fiscal year to get to a point where we know what the, it's probably going to be next fiscal year.
Okay.
On specific project funding.
So maybe that wording needs to change a little bit to reflect what you're saying.
Well, I was just pointing out that the first bullet is really, is really a follow-on subset action to the second bullet.
Right. So what I'm proposing is that we have the first bullet.
Yes.
I mean, the second bullet is going to be our actual objective, and it includes the first bullet. So I...
But it'd be sequential.
Yes, of course. I mean, that's part of develop implementation plan, including funding, right?
Okay. That works for you, what we got there?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, I think you said it's a should-do?
I'm proposing it's a should-do, if anyone else wants to have a debate about it.
No, I agree with that. I think it's a protecting property in terms of the priority.
Assistant manager.
And just remember, this is one of your earmarked requests.
So we definitely should do it. I don't know if we need to go back. I mean, to me, a must-do is something that's a legal requirement or has, you know, legal issues associated. Whether it should do is, consequences if we don't do it, but not, you know, not to the extent of a must-do legal thing.
Like ADA would be a must-do?
Yes.
So for that item, we have evaluate, I'm just going to keep it evaluate, stormwater study recommendations and develop implementation plan, including funding, as should-do.
Correct.
Yeah, and is protecting property, unless somebody wants to debate, you know, because with priorities, priorities, we've got health and safety is first, providing core services second, protecting property third, and amenities fourth. So for prioritization, it's, seems like it's protecting property.
Is that what we decided when we, when we, I don't think I remember all those things as our priority. I thought we decided it was going to be disposed. Those were subsets of must-do, should-do, nice-to-do.
Um, I don't...
That health and safety and all that other stuff.
I had our goals, there's no tax increase, no deficit spending, set aside for beach nourishment, and then the priorities were these four. I don't know where...
Heather, do you?
I didn't bring that old package with me.
Yeah, me neither.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think we can keep walking through them, recognize what must be done.
So do we want to just write should-do, or do we want to write protecting property?
Well, if you can write them both, we can correct it if that's not the right prioritization, but...
Okay. So then the next one would be water system. Under that, we have water tower needs assessment, develop plans and specs based on capacity study, completion of the water system assessment, water tower and corresponding update of the CIP.
Okay. My understanding, same thing. We've got a study underway that we will get results. And then, I don't know, Chris, do we have another study that's also the GIS water assets? Or are they the same study? Or how many studies do we have in flight?
The GIS stuff was part of that, that contract.
Okay.
And everything was in that list, right? It's included in that settlement.
And do you know when that will be done?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping by last this month, maybe first of March, but I will follow up. He and the guy spent the whole day last week on his engineers doing a roll of water system with the records and stuff. So I will follow up to see if we can have a date, but all three of those tie to that. So that's one of them, in my opinion.
Chris, do you think there's any chance we could get the stormwater engineer and the water system engineer to come in, give us a brief of what we're looking at? And does everybody think that's worthwhile?
I would assume we could do whatever we want.
You mean when we get the assessment done?
Well, just let us know what he's got going on. I mean...
Well, I mean, I would just wait for it to be completed, and then I'm sure we're going to discuss it.
Okay. Delay that request.
I think that makes perfect sense, if it's ready and completed, and if there's any questions, then we can bring him to the table there and see what everybody's concerns are with it. If I have, or if we might go over a little bit.
So I would probably make the proposal again, we'll just keep the third bullet as the objective, since it encompasses the first two. Everyone okay with that? And that, again, would be a should-do.
And then I'd put that as a core service. Water sewer is a core service priority, however...
Okay. So I've got completion of water system assessment and corresponding update of the CIP, should-do core.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right. The next one's sewer. Under that, we've got sewer system, lift station number two, Greensboro lift station upgrade, complete pump station two upgrade, evaluate future capacity increase requirements, and start work on sewer station number two upgrade.
We're missing station two, aren't we? Obviously, we want to get number two done, so that should be straightforward. I had, I had put in there just evaluate future sewer capacity increase if we have a water increase. Chris has told me he doesn't think that's necessary, so if that's where that falls, that's okay. I don't know if you want to look at that?
Well, Chris, I'm glad that, that it's actually, we did, we did, we did a lot of, we did start very, very, very late to lock.
Okay.
So that you can watch your suit.
Okay. Well, then, we can strike that portion off.
Yes.
One thing I would like to add to this one is, and this may be a non-critical, is to look at the vacuum bypass system. If everybody's agreeable to that, I didn't add that in under sewer?
I don't disagree with it. I don't know, and maybe it's two things. To me, get sewer station two done is one, and then that is a separate...
Yeah, Chris and I have had a little discussion. It could be very pricey.
Well, it'd be a SIP item, but...
Yes, sir.
Well, we made it from 2006 to now, without that piece of equipment. But I do think sometime in the future, it might be next week, or it might be 15 years from now, I think it would be a wise investment to have something like that in place. I mean, even with the pump station raised up or something like that, you don't ever know. You could have a fire and it burned every panel box off the wall in there, and it would give you the ability to make something, something happen and not lose sewer service. I do. Am I okay to spitball a number out there?
Sure.
I've actually talked with Airback last week, and just a spitball number was like $600, some thousand dollars. And that don't include any lack of connection stuff you have to make at the station to be able to make that work. It does give you peace of mind if you can make something happen. If you do have a problem, I see it. We made it this long without it, but sooner or later, I think somebody would be happy to have it.
I had a question, and I probably, when we did the tour, maybe I was wrong, but does that vacuum truck have that capacity to hook it up and provide a vacuum?
It's got vacuum time, but it, I don't think it could do.
It won't do what we're talking about?
We could do what we need to do with that.
Okay. It'd just be in an emergency, if you had the fire or something like you talked about.
And that number I gave you, that was also maybe about a 10-minute conversation with the head guy at Airback. I was, I'm in hopes that maybe he would give us some pretty good prices on some of the equipment that we pulled out that we didn't need, because we've got more spares, and we probably know what to do with it right now. But what he sent me back on the boat, you'd be foolish to send it back to him, because he only offered like about $1,000. That would have covered the cost of shipping and going back to Indiana. And you're like, I can rebuild those for about four, five grand a piece, and have all the spares that you'd ever need. I was just trying to figure out ways, maybe I could cut the cost. I figured it would offer a whole lot more than that, because they were pumping like $20,000, some thousand dollars a piece, you know. That was that, that's what I got.
So can we put that in a, what was it, the like-to-do category, to see if we can refine that number?
Yeah. That's investigate vacuum bypass system?
Yeah.
That's a, you got that, Heather?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, for the other one, I'm, I, basically, I think, David, you're given an update later on what, where we stand. I mean, I just kind of said, let's just do it. I didn't know what the sequence was for the funding and for the design completion and for the RP and start construction. I would assume we're not going to get the whole thing up and going and done next fiscal year. We'll be in flight at some level. And I think it's tied to funding, is what my understanding, the way you described it, so...
Unless, well, yes.
If everything aligns, you think we can get it underway next year, next fiscal? Okay.
So can we put down just as a complete pump station two upgrade, as the consolidated version?
I, that's the question, is will we get it done, or will we just get, I mean, I think we want to get it underway.
That's our goal, right?
Yeah. I mean, the goal, we get it done, right?
And that's a should.
Yes. And it's a core service.
Okay. So under sewer, I've got complete pump station two upgrade, should core, and then we are adding investigate vacuum bypass system, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. Both core service, right?
Okay. And then we have the fire station. Under that, we've got fire station assessment, county responsibility, work towards being manned 24/7, renovation upgrade, current building versus purchasing land for new building, project plan, funding requirements, investigate and possibly plan for the fire station, including funding requirements.
I got the same question. I mean, I don't know the current status. I know a letter was written. There was a request made. I lose track of it after that, so I don't know, I mean, this is in conjunction with Tri Beach, so we kind of got to move together with them. And I guess maybe, David, you could tell us, or Alan, where we are with their requests that they made like a year ago, I think.
We haven't done anything since the fire chief came in and presented the location, optimal location of, or the required location where the substation had to be in order to get a break on the insurance. We haven't done anything since.
And so is the current location not adequate?
It, it's, it's in the right spot.
It is, okay.
It's in the right spot.
Right. But the building is not adequate?
That's correct.
For 24/7?
So, well, that's my question. Because, yeah, my understanding was, well, there were kind of two things in flight. One was a whole different building that would have ladder-truck capabilities. And then the other one was being able to do 24/7. And I didn't know if we've already said that cannot happen in the current building, or it can happen with some upgrades to it.
We haven't done anything since the board, since the fire chief came down and said it's got to be in this range. Beyond that, nothing has been done.
Okay. So let me ask this.
In order to, in order to get to those type of specifics, y'all going to bring, need to bring in some help.
Yep.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you, how do we progress this thing?
Because the creation of fire departments, it ranges from Alpha to Omega, none of which I am well-versed in between the two, except for the fact that Tim Evans told me, if you sleep people where you're running vehicles, you've got issues that have to be dealt with. That was, that was about the only thing that I have, that I know about building fire departments.
Okay. So for this activity, we're not going to try to solve it. I think the last bullet is probably the objective, which is investigate and possibly plan for fire station, including funding requirements. That would satisfy our...
And what type of actions would you, would you consider that would satisfy those two action words there, investigate and possibly plan? What types of things can we do that would, you know, what's to bring back to y'all on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking we need more coordination with Tri Beach in terms of, is this still a real, a real request, or have they moved on and they want to do something else, and it's, they're not interested in anymore? And then, I mean, my understanding is it's a negoti, we've got a contract or something with a service level, you know, that we come together and say, okay, if you want to do this, we've got to do that. Let's work out.
Why don't we start with providing the board with the contract?
That'd be good.
Let's go with that.
Hey, David, the next thing I would be looking for...
Because there's a, the, the provision of fire service in Brunswick County is a different animal with the mix of local government fire departments, volunteer fire departments within or without municipal corporate limits. It's, there's a body of work on it. So start with a contract, and also the law on fire fees will provide that to you.
Perfect.
But I think that that would go toward the investigate and possibly plan as the, as the feeder action on figuring out what type of coordination with the fire department is necessary in order to scope the total requirement. So...
And if they're willing to, if they're willing to man it 24/7, because...
Well, okay.
I mean, that's my assumption. They got to pay the staffing, right? We could provide the facility, but they would have to pay people.
Well, we'll end up paying the people.
Do we? I don't know what the deal is.
Right. Give us the contract, let us look at it, and then maybe we can have an intelligent discussion.
Okay.
And that would be a should, Heather, in, I think.
Protecting property. I mean, my assumption is there's no way we will have a new fire station next fiscal year. It's the plan to...
Well, we'll have to see, when we investigate.
And my, just, did Christie brief y'all on the information she found out about fire protection?
Yes.
My, my facts are running together, yeah, okay.
It couldn't be one of our.
Yeah.
Okay. So for fire station, we have investigate and possibly plan for the fire station, including funding requirements, should, protecting property, and we're going to get you a copy of the contract.
Thank you.
Fire be law. Got you. Okay. The next item under, we're going to amenities, parks and erects. The pavilion, we've got renovate, rebuild, wear, repair versus replace versus move, public input needed on moving, residents concerned for noise, develop corrective actions to eliminate structural deficiencies, and plan for the pavilion, including funding requirements.
Why don't we simply investigate the cost of removing the roof?
Rick, I...
Using the, using the stage as it is, and maybe put some shades over the top of it for the concert.
Yeah, I, so...
The roof is the problem, not the whole structure.
I think we can't really move forward on this until we see what the latest report says, right? I mean, we have to see what the report says.
Can it not be torn down before we get that report? Can it not, the top not be removed before we get a report?
I don't think so, because Tim said that even if you remove the roof, you still have to have an engineer to certify it with the roof removed, that it's safe. That's what I heard last month.
Mr. Evans, can you help us out?
I don't know if I said that enough, but, I don't know if I said that enough, but you could take the top off of it. Like I said, you could cut it off at guardrails, if that's what you want to do. I would wait, I would wait till you got the engineer's evaluation. It shouldn't be that much longer. I don't know how much longer it's going to take.
I think he told us two weeks, and Tri will be the end of two weeks, I believe.
Yeah. So I'll give him a call, and we can probably get that back pretty quick. But if you wanted to, you could. We would just simply inspect the bottom half and tell you if it's okay once you took the top off. We would issue a permit for demolition of the top portion. The rest of it would still be in compliance. If I said that, you know, I mean, I don't remember putting it like that, but it was not my intention that you couldn't take the top off without getting an engineer analysis. I would say before you did any, you know, before you took any of it apart, get a analysis to make sure you would have to, kind of thing.
Rick, I kind of agree with you. That's why I said develop correction, corrective actions to get rid of whatever the structural deficiencies are, and that should be identified in that report. So we get the report in, we decide what we're going to do. And I just want to mention one other thing. We're looking at next year's budget, not, that may be something we can get done this year based on the report.
That was my thought, was this, we need to do that this year. I mean, concerts are...
I don't think removing the top would take very long. We probably could get the bid out and get that done within a month.
Yeah, probably right.
Instead of, I don't know how much of engineering, you know, it's going to cost, but instead of spending the money on that, spend the money on taking the top off, and you can inspect the deck. I'm just trying to save the citizens some money.
That's true.
And give us a place to have the concerts.
If you cut it off at the guardrails, it would be in compliance. You may have to do some positive work, you know, and it would stop.
Right.
But you got to remember, you got tenant fees, and you need to be a contractor to remove, confirm it, and then be tenant fees on it, and then, of course, they got to consider factors of sales back on it, so probably not doing that this year, the budget, the way that number comes.
Christie may know.
Christie?
I want us to be careful about continuing to use the word "sales," because I think when we hear "sales," we think about the playground over here. And we can't have a system like that where there's gaps, because several times this past year, we've had rain showers that come between the time they set up and when they start playing. And most of the contracts read, if their equipment gets wet, we buy it. So it's got to be something that covers the entire structure, like what is there now. I'm not talking about a wooden roof, but you can't just go piece three or four shade cells up that you buy on Amazon and call it good, because there's going to be glare on the bands, and there's also going to be the potential that the rain comes down on them. It's going to have to be an entire covered structure. So I can't guarantee you we would have to investigate lead times and ordering that just because you cut the top off, that we're having concerts there. We have the fall-back plan of the park. But just want to get that out there, because I feel like we're starting down a conversation where we're saying, yes, if we go cut the top off of this, we can go. And we got to look for something that would cover the whole top, what that cost would be, if it's in the budget, that kind of thing.
So I'm not sure if Rick was aware that Christie already had an alternate plan. Did you know that they were going to use the pavilion with minimal cost?
Picnic shelter.
Picnic shelter? They already, so they already have a plan for what to do for the concerts, and you're moving forward with all the contracts on the bands, right?
David signed those contracts based on y'all's guidance when we left the last meeting, and they've gone back to the bands. We can investigate the cost, but if you guys move forward with taking the top off, I just want us to be... I just want us to be careful about getting that rhetoric out there of "sales" and people thinking that we're talking about what's over here, because that won't work.
The first thing that we need to do is eliminate whatever the structural deficiency is, and then we can worry about sales and other tops and stuff. But getting rid of the safety issue is number one. Do we agree?
I agree. I still am hung up on this fiscal year versus next fiscal year, 'cause all the stuff I think we're talking about should get done for concert. I mean, it should be done this fiscal year. So if this is about next year, I guess I'm not sure what we should do, you know, long-term. Because I assume sales are not a long-term solution.
Well, it says fiscal year 24, 25, but I would say it's going forward from this date. What are we gonna be working on, even though it says that? And the pavilion is on our plate, whether we do it next month or we do it next year, we have to come up with a plan for it. But I don't think we're in any big hurry, because we have a workaround already. So I certainly think we at least need to wait for that report to come back before we move forward with any action.
Again, back to the should-dos. We should eliminate, we should move forward with corrective actions to eliminate that structural deficiency, which may likely be taking the top off. If we can't do it this year, then...
Honestly, I don't think that's a should-do. I have anything that says amenity and parks and rec as a nice-to-have slash like-to-do.
Well, I think it's a safety issue, it should be.
Well, if we're not using it, there's not a safety issue.
Well, do you want your goal then to be the plan for the pavilion, including funding requirements? Because you guys aren't really deciding deciding today, so that could be your goal, and then...
That's what I had highlighted, is that that would probably put the word "create" in front of it, like, create a plan for the pavilion, so there's an action.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
And then what would you like to...
Right.
Which should?
I don't think it's a should-do.
Nice-to-have?
Yeah, I mean, look, look at your definitions.
Yeah, I, and I'm assuming it's an amenity, not a, not a safety, because we're not gonna take the risk.
Right.
So it's an amenity, nice-to-have.
So I've got create plan for the pavilion, including funding requirements, nice-to-have, amenity.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, on block Q, under that, we have ADA compliant bathhouse, boat parking, move towards completion, and moving festivals to this location to ease scope of police department's work due to road closures, develop project-based plan on committees and public input, and site plan for block Q, including funding requirements.
I think moving ahead with the bathrooms is a must-do.
I don't see that as a must-do. I mean, we're gonna do it, but it's not a must-do. It's not even a should-do. It's a nice-to-do, because it's not required. It's not under our ADA agreement. We have many bathrooms.
Assistant manager.
I would just, as you guys were talking through this goal, remind you that the grant's gonna be coming before you, and it does have a timeline on it. So it's typically those development grants are 18 months, and you're probably gonna be looking at signing it next month, because they've told us it's on the way. So if you're gonna accept the grant, you would be looking to accomplish it next budget year, which means you also have to put your stormwater in.
So the 18 months is to get it done.
That's typically what the timelines they put on development grants.
I'm gonna agree with Rick. It is a must-do. The ADA requirements for a restroom, uh, the ones we have under the bridge are not adequate and cannot be made adequate. We need a nice restroom area ADA, that meets ADA requirements. Uh, we, we don't want to move backwards, we want to move forward. We've got a grant to make this happen, and there's no need to, uh, not make it happen. I'm sorry, that's, it's a got-to.
I, I think you need to look at the definite, I mean, what happens if we don't do it? I'm not saying that we're not gonna do it. I'm just saying that it should be categorized as a nice-to-have, because if we didn't do it, we didn't, we, our, we, it's not on our agreement that we have to lawfully do it, right? That bathroom is not on that agreement. Does everyone agree with that? I mean, Tim can tell us, that bathroom is not on your agreement, right? The Bridgewater Agreement.
It, it's not on the Key Bridge Foundation Agreement.
Right, so that makes it not a must-do. Because if it was on there, then it's a must-do. If we put in a new bathroom...
Something you're gonna have to do, on that agreement.
Right, but it's not on the agreement, so it's not a must-do.
Well, I still put it in the must-do, because the work's gone in, the grant's been applied for. It would be nicer than what we have. We can go around as to whether or not the bathroom's under the bridge or ADA compliant or whatnot, but it is still another facility. So for me, it's a must-do.
Maybe I could agree with it, should-do, but it's not must. I mean, must is, is safety or, or by law. I think we need to maybe define what the must-do, should-do, nice-to-have is again, if we're gonna go through it like that.
And I, I think we're gonna do it.
Agreed, agreed.
Because we're gonna have the money and we're gonna do it, so...
I agree.
Uh, you know, even if we should, then we should, but I just...
Even if it's a nice-to-have, we're gonna do some nice-to-have.
We're arguing over the definition of must, I think.
Mr. Smith, been trying to get the floor for a couple of minutes.
No, I'm sorry.
Let's give him 30 seconds or so, at least.
Again, it's not on this required, uh, Department of Justice mediation list. But if we don't do it, it will be on the next one. I feel, I feel it will be. This is something that we really need to do to just to protect, or no, just to make sure that the, the people that aren't as fortunate as we are, that can walk and get around, can have a, a restroom that they can use, uh, that is ADA compliant. I mean, we, we, why would we not do it? Again, I think it's a, I'm, I want to keep it in the category really of must-do. We've got a grant, but it'll pay for the majority of it. It's just a, it's just kind of a, a no-brainer, in my opinion.
Mr. Evans?
Okay, let me give you a history. I've given this lesson a couple of times, and maybe it passed on by, but I'll go slow. When I got here, I condemned the pavilion. I don't know, it was first week, first day, I don't know when it was. Part of the problem was, with the pavilion, was that beyond not being built the way it was supposed to be built, was it didn't meet the ADA requirements, and there were several deficiency in it. One of them was it had egresses off the stage that handicap people could not get off of. So we had to add a handicap ramp to the right-hand side. There was, I had to bring in Laurel Wright, who at the time is probably, and still probably is, the most educated person when it comes to ADA. I had to bring in an NC DOI investigator. We were allowed to use the bathrooms under the bridge, although, and we had to, to be very, uh, creative with our access routes, not to exceed the travel distance from the pavilion to those bathrooms for ADA compliance. Okay, so when it was reopened, it was reopened with that understanding that those bathrooms were on the verge of being too far, depending on where that access route was made from the pavilion, which is an amenity, which is an A4 outside assembly occupancy, which requires restrooms. So when we talk about what, about ADA and what we need and what we don't need, we need to, to think about where we put the stuff and where we have the stuff now. And so I would be very careful to say that it's not something that we need or is not required if we are gonna develop block Q, you know what I mean? Or if anything ever happens to the bathrooms that we have now. And, and I, I say this, that we, depending on how they allowed me to lay out the access route when I got here from the pavilion, which was not taken into account, was one of the few reasons why we were even allowed to use it, was because they were lenient about that travel distance to that bathroom from that pavilion. It's written somewhere, it's in a report somewhere, but the report's 15 years old, and I don't know if I can find it, or I may, I may have stuffed it in the file, I don't know.
So the new bathroom is within the distance of the current pavilion?
I believe that the, the access route that we would be able to take, because it, the travel distance that it has, and the fact that it's, the, the things it has to go through and around, I do believe, judging from my own investigation, that where we put those bathrooms would put us within that route configuration.
It, it, you remember, like I remember, which may mean that we're both wrong, but...
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I hope it is, and if that's the requirement, then I hope it is.
I don't know if anybody remembers or not, but I believe that there was discussion about how the bathrooms got on there. And if you'll go back and listen to the minutes, you'll find, you'll hear that discussion, about how the bathrooms ended up on block Q. And I'll just, I'll leave it at that. But, but the, the primary reason was, was that I think staff thought, in our department, that staff thought that bathrooms should go there, because that was my first opportunity since 2010, the beginning of 2010, to get bathrooms that would comply with the North Carolina Building Code, the accessible routes, and the ADA requirements.
Okay.
And that's a history you wouldn't have. That's a history nobody would have until I just spoke.
Thank you, Tim.
There's, there's no doubt in my mind, if we build a bathroom, it's gonna be ADA compliant.
Correct.
And it's on the plan for block Q, and if the pavilion goes in there, then I think they'll even be closer. So that's not a debate, it's a fact. You know, I, I guess, I don't know, can, can they require us to build a bathroom versus just if we don't build it? I mean, granted, if we're gonna build it, it'll be ADA compliant, but I don't know that we're required to build it.
If you put any kind of outside occupancy in there...
So if we move the pavilion to block Q, we're gonna have to have a bathroom there.
It will be within the specific access route, limitations...
Yeah, and that's the plan, yeah. And all I'm, all I'm asking is, are we forced to do it next year? Or can we put it off for a year or two? Is it really a must-do next year?
I think, I think you're forced to do it next year, because what, what Tim said is that, or what he didn't say is that we were allowed to use the distance from the pavilion to the old bathrooms. He didn't say that it was correct, that it was within the distance. He said we were allowed to have it to be too far, because technically, it's too far.
Mr. Clemmons?
Uh, uh, we, we got that clear. We met with DOT. I can't issue the permit, who would I issue it to? We don't own the property, and unless they wanted to do renovations to their own property in the right-of-way, they would have to sign the, the permit. Well, their own rules don't allow stuff like that in the right-of-way. Gentlemen, sit right where he's at, when we had the meeting, and sit, looked me straight in the face, because I said, "Well, who's gonna get the permit?" I can't, you can't issue permits for buildings to be built in right-of-ways. And you certainly can't issue permits for building, so if you're gonna do a repair and it ends up being something of significance, even if it is a repair and requires a permit, who's signing the permit? Yeah, I, I think that we're fortunate. Old Red, they used to say, we've all heard that saying, but I think we're very fortunate that duck chickens ain't come home to roost yet.
Yeah.
We've just been fortunate.
And I think with the grant available, that we need to go ahead and move forward on it.
I agree with that, Rick. I'm not saying that we're not gonna do the bathrooms, because I'm sure we are gonna do the bathrooms, especially with the grant available. But I was just saying it wasn't a must-do, because must-do for me is safety and law. And so I would put it as a needs-to-do. That's all. And I, I'm sure we are gonna do it, because we're gonna get the grant, and we're gonna move forward with it, but I was just saying that it's not a must-do. That's all.
So do you want it to say site plan for block Q, um, to include ADA compliant bathrooms and including funding requirements, or...
That's good. I mean, this is in front of Parks and Rec right now to have them weigh in on other amenities.
It would probably be like the last one, to say, "Create a site plan for block Q, including funding requirements and the ADA compliant bathhouse."
Yep.
Now, hold on a second. The bathrooms, and I hate to have this discussion over must-do, like-to-do. We, we're three-quarters of the way there on the bathrooms, Christie, is that correct? I mean, we probably need the detailed designs to go out and bid it. We've got a grant coming. To me, it seems that we just, it, we need to move, this needs to be on David's list to accomplish this year.
So you want to make them separate things? You want the block Q plan to be separate from the bathrooms? And like we did before, we had two things up there.
Yes, I mean, we're, we're not, we don't intend for the committee to change the bathroom design, do we?
No. That, that's not what they're doing, is it, Christie?
No.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all are rapid-fireing me on, rapid-fireing on me a little bit here. So, yes, the architect that's working on block Q gave a proposed bathroom plan to David and Tim to look at. I, that is a sketch, and I don't know if, what, they probably can answer more if it's 75% or not. I don't know that answer, but I will tell you that you, it's my understanding that y'all can't put a bathroom down without addressing stormwater, which is not addressed yet. So I don't know that I can answer your percentage question, about 75% there, and what can be accomplished this budget year, because we're back to the planning stage.
Mr. Evans, you gonna answer that?
I don't know if I wanna answer that.
I have an approved stormwater plan in mind. There's been an approved stormwater plan for that site, and there's a set of bathrooms on there, but it's only a site plan. I don't think I've ever seen a specific set of design drawings for the bathroom.
I haven't.
Just only a site plan, and we reviewed it along with the board and other folks. But there is an approved stormwater plan, um, that would either have to be changed or modified, you know, if we make any changes. But, you know, you're, the guy that's handling that'll, your other stuff will handle that as well. But, uh, you know what I mean, I would assume that you wouldn't have to, that's a, that amenity sitting on site, and I'm sure the stormwater, the majority of the stormwater's not tied to that bathroom, but tied to all those other impervious areas, you know what I mean? And it's probably not a big part of the stormwater. Does that make sense? So I guess...
I think, I mean, the question is, can, can we split the bathroom and those properties and the grant that's tied to those properties from the remainder of block Q, which is the bigger parcel? And maybe that's what you were saying, is treat them separately?
I think, I think, I think you can. I think they can just modify, any changes they need to make, based on the changes you want, they can just modify the stormwater plan.
Right.
But what I'm saying is, is we don't have a bathroom design, we got a site plan. That's what we use for our, for the storm...
Right, and, and the plan all along was to do it in phases, um, and the bathroom being one phase of it.
And Christie, the grant doesn't cover 100% of the cost, right? So we need to have something in the budget, or are there somethings already in the budget?
No, the way that works is, um, you wait to see if you're approved for it, and then the board has to accept it. So when it comes before you, you'd make a budget amendment. It's a reimbursable grant, so you'd have to budget the entire amount, and then you would get 75% back.
The, the board has to appropriate funds.
But we won't have gone out to bid to know what it costs yet, have we?
It's, it's based on, the contract is based on the, um, package that we put forward with estimates, and it's been approved. So that's what the grant package is, and then we won't know what the specifics are until we go to bid.
So, so, so I understand, like, the 75%, then they pay 75% of what we estimated? And if it comes in higher, we eat the difference? Okay. I hope we have a good estimate.
Well, and likewise, if you come in under budget, you only qualify for reimbursement for what you're under budget.
75% of the under-budget amount, so it's definitely lopsided.
Right.
All right, so I'm still confused, are we gonna split the bathrooms from the rest of block Q?
I think we should, yeah, I think we should.
And the, and the, so it's a site plan for the ADA compliant bathrooms, including funding?
No, it's create a site plan for block Q, including funding requirements, and then it's also ADA create, or, um, ADA compliant bathhouse.
And both of them need to, or...
I think it's a should-do.
Should-do.
Well, the bathroom is a, I'll agree to a should-do, even though I don't think it is, but the block Q is definitely like a, a nice-to-have. I mean, the town keeps running, and everybody has a bathroom, and everybody goes to the beach. If we don't have, do anything to Block Q, that's a nice to have.
Okay, so what we're looking at is ADA compliant bathhouses should do and create a site plan for Block Q, including funding requirements, nice to have?
That'll work.
And they're both amenities?
Both amenities.
And I assume we can just, if it turns out that way, we can just do the bathroom, and it'd just be on the parcels where the bathroom is, and it'd have its own water or retention just for those parking spots for the bathroom? Or do they get commingled with the bigger parcel?
Well, depending on how much development you're doing, but I would assume that if you're trying to do anything in the future, you're just not allowed to. So keep the plan modified.
So we'd have.
Or, or you may have to do nothing, that's what I'm saying. The stormwater plan itself, it takes it into a hole. But if the stormwater is isolated for one section or another, they don't have to do anything. You just, as long as the permit's in place, you can build bathrooms with a current formula plan.
Okay.
You know, you just build that portion of the stormwater plan that could apply to the bathrooms.
Okay.
That's the way.
Okay, then, um, under the pier, we've got develop long-term plan. Create a committee with specific tasker to analyze pier options, must include cost analysis, and how each option would be funded long-term. Pier building, develop a long-term plan, does not have to be tied to the pier plan. Need bid on repairs after changing scope of work. Repair, replace, consider forming a committee, business plan for the pier properties, including funding requirements, and develop project plan for the pier property, including part of requirements, the desired end state of the pier property, phasing to accomplish, rough order costs, phase, and funding strategy.
Yep, that's it.
The elephant in the room.
Yes. So once again, I think some of this will be this fiscal year. I mean, I assume if we're gonna set up a committee, we're gonna set it up soon. And then some will be next year, and then some will be years and years and years.
Can I make one proposal first, before we get into the pier itself? Can we have, uh, the pier building, develop a long-term plan, be a separate thing from the actual pier? Or does everyone think they need to be together?
I, I think they can be separate. They're not dependent on each other.
What do you think?
Well, I think having the committee to look at this is a good idea. Uh, number one, because it needs to be what the community thinks, not what we think, to move forward with it. And develop some type of plan. I guess you could have them separate.
Kinda like blocks.
They could be, I guess I don't.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't, it seems like we're getting in the weeds here.
I got, I got a, just a fundamental question here, because we're talking about, and I, I know that y'all, we, uh, are struggling how to, how to deal with this, but the, and I, I look, I look at these goals as they transmute into the budget as to what am I responsible for? How do you see, who is the responsibility for moving whatever it is that's decided on, on the, the final composition of the pier? If a pier committee is created, I'm not the boss of the pier committee.
Right.
And so how, how does that integrate with the staff work and the town budget? I, I don't know.
What's a typical committee, is it, committee reports to the board, board directs you, is that?
Yes.
How it works? I mean, I, I, I wouldn't imagine this to be any, like the parking committee was, or, you know, we've got other committees we've had.
I would say the staff is on hold until the committee comes back with the recommendation, just like the board is on hold on the pier until the committee comes back with the recommendation.
Can a committee give us prices?
Well, and, and, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll hold that question. My question is, is, is this committee going to be a committee that does not include any staff members who have unique, specific information that would be relative to it? I'm not pitching for inclusion on that committee, I don't, I don't, I don't know that, who you're gonna get to be on the committee that can flavor the sauce of what that committee goes through with the town's perspective and local government rules regarding finance, construction, contracting, bidding, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, I don't know.
No, I think that's probably a good, a good add, that someone from the staff should be on the committee.
I, yeah, I thought staff was always on all committees. Was there a committee without staff?
Well, I believe there's one in the ordinance that says that staff is specifically prohibited from being on committees.
Maybe not.
I don't remember if we took that out or not.
Okay.
I feel like that was, and then it went away.
Okay.
Well, we didn't change any of that, if you're talking about the.
No, 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 no.
Thank you, thank you.
No, 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 I didn't mean any for that.
Oh, official member of the committee versus advisor, consultant, okay.
Well, it's kinda the same thing, I guess. I mean, from perspective of what the committee's outputting, if a staff member's on it as a consultant, then they're inputting into the committee, right?
I, I'd assume so, and I certainly don't, you know, didn't intend that to be solved here, but it's something that came up and out.
No, no, that's a good point, good point.
So basically, what you're saying, David, is that you don't know how to get a marching order out of all this stuff we've listed on the pier. And I believe until we have a committee formed with direction for it, we can't give you a marching order at this point. And what we're trying to do here today is to give you your priorities of what's gonna get worked on next year. So, I don't know that we can, we should move on to this till we figure out the committee. And we should move forward in figuring out the committee. But that's, we're not gonna figure that out today.
Ultimately, I just need to be told what to do.
Right.
And, and.
And we can on this one, I don't see that here.
So should we skip it, or should we say that we wanna create a committee? I mean, it's not only for.
I don't think.
It's not only for David, it's for us, too.
Well, yeah.
To decide what we're gonna be working, what we're gonna be working on at the board.
Well, I think we need to establish a peer committee and go from there.
I agree. And I think staff should definitely be involved, um, whether, I don't know what the precedent is for being on the committee versus being a consultant to the committee.
Again, how can, what is a committee gonna do if they, if they don't have any pricing or any idea what stuff's gonna cost? If we're not gonna rebid the pier or, and change the scope, how are they gonna know? Well, maybe that's not a good idea, oh, that might be a better idea. I mean, you, 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 there's too much ambiguity between all of it. I mean, what's a committee gonna do? Sit around and talk about what they'd like to have, that's great, but what's it cost?
No, they need to have what it's cost.
To move forward on this in any, whether it is a committee or not, which I've been on those committees, and, uh, I've, when we dissolved the committee, I, I said I didn't think it was, uh, it really did that much good. Uh, town staff is very adequate on, uh, taking care of stuff. But we, uh, but we definitely need to go out and get some, uh, get a new bid on, uh, making repairs and changing the scope of the work so we can make a educated decision instead of just having, and spinning our wheels on a committee that's still not gonna know what the cost of anything is. And that's it.
For the committee to be effective, I think they'd have to be empowered to be able to go retain an engineer, get, get estimates, because you're right, we've gotta have good numbers to base decisions. So, you know, for them to come up with a business plan for the pier, they would need to have outside help.
A committee can.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about, let's, let's talk about that.
Hold on a minute. We need some direction, please, from you, town manager, to remind all of us of what we are capable of dismissing and passing to unelected committees. Um, I, I'm not supposed to talk about it, you can talk about it. And then, and explain the obligation, the liabilities, and so forth of the elected officials versus just appointing somebody to go out there and do something. If you'll educate us on that, please.
Well, the only, um, official that's authorized to disburse money is the finance officer. Okay? But, that, you, you cannot appoint a committee and say, y'all can go spend this money. It, it's, it, it doesn't work that way. So, um, to say that they're empowered to go hire help, that does, it, it can't be that, it can't be that way. The board has to authorize, either through the budget and delegate it to a staff member, or the board has to authorize it straight. Did I say that right, Daniel?
Yeah, got you.
Yeah, but there's, there're only bond, there's only certain bonded people that are authorized to disburse funds, and that would not be appointed committee members.
Understood.
Thank you.
I, I think the issue is, we need good estimates. We don't wanna, you know, go out for RFPs on things just to go fishing for numbers. The board would need to authorize the retention of somebody that could give us, an engineering firm or whoever would give us a good estimates, and that information would then be available to the committee.
That's what I just said, sir, thank you.
Okay.
So to do that, we're gonna have to get a bid.
No, you get the engineer to estimate it, and we can talk about that offline if you want.
Yeah, because we're talking about a twenty-year estimate versus a one-year. That's what, if we look at the, you know, this is the one that I have. Create a committee with specific tasker to analyze pier options, must include cost analysis, including maintenance and operating costs, and how each option would be funded, repair, replace, and sell. So, I mean, we're looking, and the next one on the next page is develop a long-term plan. So, that's what I would expect the committee to do. Come back and say, this is how much it would cost to repair it for the next twenty years and maintain it. This is how much it would cost to build a new one that will last fifty years, or this is what would happen if you do nothing.
You got me confused, I'm sorry.
Can I make a recommendation here? Could we just table this and move on, because we're not clear on it?
Sure.
Would, would that be okay with everybody, because there's confusion here? David is not getting what actions he needs to look forward to executing this year. Is everybody all right with that?
I'm okay for today, I think we're gonna have to address this through the budget.
Yeah.
So, we can't.
I think we have to, have more discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next one would be repair the park horses, marsh between Greensboro and Scotchbonnet Drive. Consider move to area not flooded.
Uh, I'm okay if we keep that on there, but it's a nice to have.
Agreed.
So leave it, and nice to have?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's an amenity.
Yep.
Then the next one is consider a location to have pickleball courts to free the basketball. Oops, should say court, my bad, court.
Depends on how you play basketball.
I would say that's the same as the previous one, it's, um, I would leave it on, it's a nice to have. But I would say that maybe the Block Q committee should consider that.
Parks and Rec, definitely.
And so amenity also then?
Yep.
And then assess existing Parks and Rec facilities, playground equipment for maintenance, repair, or replacement.
That would be the same.
Yeah, it's almost like you could group those three if you could come up with a nice, you know, recreational facilities or something, because we're talking about the park horse, pickleball, and, and playground, so it's all Parks and Rec kind of.
I see them a little different, Tom, because the third bullet has to do with stuff that already exists, and the other ones are, well, the, the park horse is a repair. Um, so, the location for the pickleball, that's a, that's a new asset to me, but that's a nuance.
I think they're all worth having on a.
Yep.
Potential list.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, then we're moving to the general tab, and the first one says ADA compliance, complete mediation work, consideration of other areas needing upgrades, construction of other ADA compliant amenities, complete all obligations per the agreement, and completion of ADA required project.
So, see, I would see that, that's a must do.
Yep.
Do you want to?
Consolidate all that stuff?
Yeah.
I just, uh, completion of ADA, wow.
Y'all, y'all are talking about the Key Bridge Foundation, right?
Right, yeah, the, yeah.
Doesn't say completion of all ADA required projects.
How about complete all obligations per the agreement as a?
That's the must do, yeah.
Perfect, yeah.
Are we putting in any, I mean, other bathrooms, other than the ones that are potentially Block Q?
Anything that would be required under, under, uh, the local building codes is gonna require, is required as ADA compliance. So any project that you add that would be triggered by the local building code would then require compliance.
Would automatically require compliance, any new projects?
Any projects you got, we'd have to meet it anyway.
So, so are we doing?
Anything outside of Key Bridge Foundation that we do has to meet the ADA requirement. Since I've been here, we could make it a new bid.
Yeah.
It's the old facilities that were in.
So are we assessing other things besides what ended up in the agreement to see if we need to make ADA upgrades to other areas of the town?
I believe I said in the meeting the other day, Halsstad was actually in the budget prior to the agreement, the work that was done.
Okay.
Uh, we've been, like I said, we've been looking at it, and we've been repairing stuff, we've been bringing it in compliance
Good.
Those portions that needed to be done at the beginning. And we do have, uh, we do constantly monitor and report those things that we see need to be brought into compliance.
Good.
Uh, that's long to the town. Now, if somebody was to upgrade a commercial building, uh, we'd make them put in a ramp and that kind of stuff. Like a cat hatch up, shop was putting it up two months ago, they'd put a ramp there.
Good.
So this bullet is really the Key Bridge project?
Yes.
And it's a must do.
And it's a must do. And I, I wrestle with, is it an amenity, is it a core service, is where I kinda go?
I'd say it's a core service.
Okay.
I mean.
Okay, so, complete all obligations per the agreement, must do core service.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, monitor the proposed changes to inlet hazard areas and how this could impact property values, construction, and insurance rates.
David?
This inlet hazard area issue's been going on for fifteen years, I believe. If, if not longer. It's just where I, I intercepted or came into view on it. Yes, monitoring the proposed changes and, and monitoring how it could impact property values, construction, insurance rate. I, I would feel better with an active leader that says, and, um, assist when appropriate to scope the inlet hazard area recommendations to the benefit of Holden Beach.
Sure. Got that, Heather?
Yes.
Now, I don't know if they will be able to influence or have any effect at all, but we've been engaged for the last fifteen years on that. And, and maybe that's not the exact verb, action, and go get it, but at least there's something more than just watching something happen and seeing what it does to you. I'm a.
Yep.
Reactive kind of person, wanna make sure if there's an opportunity for us to insert ourselves to the benefit of Holden Beach, that we, we do that. Because that's what I plan to do, so y'all need to tell me not to do that, if you know what.
No, we're not.
No, no, that's it. But from a budget perspective, are there dollars that are needed for that, or is that?
Um.
Or is that part of?
Probably some trial and whatnot.
Not a tangible, not a buy kind of thing. There's not a tangible.
It'd be included in the admin or whatever budgets?
Yeah.
So, would it really even make this list then?
I think that inlet hazard area is a singular, um, issue that it needs to be in front of the board.
Okay, and that would be a should-do?
Yeah.
So, monitor the proposed changes to the inlet hazard area and how this could impact property values, construction, and insurance rates, and assist when appropriate to scope IHA recommendations to the benefit of Holden Beach. Should-do?
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm thinking protecting property.
Yeah.
Then we've got 796 Ocean Boulevard West property. Develop a plan based on financial analysis. Consider selling and take action on.
That's a nice-to-have.
I had, I think that's a should-do. And I had, I had possibly put it on the March meeting agenda, but.
Well, I don't see anything catastrophic happens if it's not a must-do for David to do. You've probably got your 10 items already.
Well, I didn't say it was a must-do.
Uh, well, that's all I was saying. It was a nice-to-do or like-to-do.
I mean, we need to do something. I'm with you. We could probably get it done this fiscal year. Um, and, and I guess, from a budget perspective, would just be if we decided to keep it, and we'd need to spend money on it. But if we decided to sell it, it's a plus to the budget, not a negative.
That goes into the sewer budget as a positive?
Yeah, that's correct. They own it.
And aren't we gonna be looking for money to finish the second, number-two station? That would be less of a loan we'd have to go out and get, is what I'm edging towards.
Well, you, you gotta, you gotta remember the, um, 796 was financed, so
Oh.
it's, it's got a debt component to it.
Guess I missed that in the budget.
I didn't see it either. Is it in a different?
Yeah.
I think it's in that bundle then with the, uh, the reverse line.
It's correct.
Oh, so it's in the loan for the number-three?
That's what I'm trying to.
It's, there's, that transaction happened at the same time. There were two debt instruments, one taxable and non-taxable, and the 796 is the taxable component of that debt.
One more reason to sell it.
Town manager, the assistant town manager, you have the floor.
And I believe as part of that, uh, paperwork and agreement, it says if you guys are gonna do anything with that property, that you have to notify the bank and get permission.
To sell it?
To do anything.
Okay, I mean, that doesn't sound like a big deal. Anyway, I have it as a should-do. If you guys wanted to debate it, that it's a nice-to-do, and I think we should do it sooner than later, especially if we're paying attention.
I'm with you. It's just sitting there vacant right now, right? Not bringing in anything or?
Well, we, we've entertained ideas or notions on, you know, getting a tenant in there, but because of the uncertainties with what's going to come of it, we've just stepped back from attempting that.
Yeah, and I think I did see $100,000 in repair in the budget that we already spent last year?
No, we didn't spend, we didn't spend. I think it's budgeted but not spent.
I think we spent $100,000 last year.
Well, we put in new AC, painted it, right?
I don't remember the amount, but there was one spent to do the back deck, the, um, AC unit.
And painted, yeah.
And that was in last year's, yeah.
That was last year or this current year?
Current year.
No, I think it was last year's budget that was completed, if I remember from looking at the. Anyway, it's costing us money, so we should do something with it sooner than later.
I'm with you. I mean, put it on the agenda for March. Let's do it.
So, would you like it to be the take action on 796 one, and then, um, do should-do?
That's what I'd like.
Yeah.
Okay, AV system. Update meeting communication system. If owl doesn't work, find a way to improve live streaming so people can hear the meeting. Uh, implement a professional AV streaming system for public meetings, and improve audio/video at town meetings. Do, can I just go ahead and grab that one? If you want to just make it, improve audio/video at town meetings, we'll bring back a quote for a professional. If you don't like it, we can move on from there.
Perfect.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
So, that's a should-do?
Should-do.
And, yeah, I had that for March, possible agenda.
And I don't know if that's an amenity or a core service. We probably need to serve our public. We can think of core service.
Oh, and that, I had 796, I've got should-do, but we didn't break it down further if you guys want to do that.
No, I thought you did. Take action on 796.
Yeah, no, I think, you mean the amenity? I, I have it as an amenity. I don't know what it's, it's not part of our core service.
I don't do that.
Amenity. Does that work for everybody, amenity?
Well, let's talk about core services. That building was bought under the auspices that it was a sound protective measure for the sewer lift station. Now, I don't know if that's part and parcel of a core service, but it does have a technical relationship to the lift station next door.
To me, the question is, if we got rid of that building, would it impact our ability to provide sewer service? Would it?
So, leave it as amenity?
Yeah, but if, if it's not going to impact our ability to provide water, sewer, other services.
And then for the AV system, um, should-do core service? Is that what you guys decided on, or?
Well, I, I wrestle, I don't know, because, I mean, to me, that's part of our governing services, but, um.
I, I mean, you could almost argue that that's a must-do, because that's open meeting laws. If people can't hear what you're saying, then you're violating those. But obviously should do core, whatever you want.
Just do a core service must, should-do. We haven't been doing it.
Okay, then.
Well, we've, we've been providing what we've been equipped with.
Yep.
Okay, communications. Review and improve the town website. Ocean Isle has a town projects tab. That would be a good addition to our website. Other improvements. Improve town websites to provide project information such as drawings, project status, updates, and schedules, master plans, emergency operation plan, land use plan, et cetera, policies, other. Investigate methods for obtaining more property owner feedback, such as water bill surveys, professional surveys, updated town website, and improved communications with citizens.
Sounds like AV. Kind of core service should-do.
Because it should-do, but she needs to consolidate.
Yep.
Update town website. The last bullet, maybe? But keep in mind all the other stuff that's like
Yeah, that would work.
I mean, we'll have to keep that.
Last bullet, and you said should-do?
Yeah, I'd, I'd say like AV, if it's core service, then it's core service.
All right. Then on the next page, we've got beach nourishment. Develop a long-term beach nourishment management plan, including funding. Review the results of the core CSRM study and update of the CIP accordingly. Inclusion of beach nourishment plans and funding in the CIP.
I've got that as protecting property, even though it's, the beach is an amenity, but the CSRM is very much to protect property.
And was that a must-do or should-do? I'm not using the same code as used, so I'm not sure where that falls.
I, I don't know. There's a legal require, I mean, we're in deep trouble if we don't do it, but there's no legal requirement that we've got to do it.
Let's call it a should-do for now. I mean, it'll get on the list. Dave's got plenty of must-dos already.
And you want to keep all three?
I would use the last bullet, because we talked about this when we did the CIP of what we might do.
Yeah, the first and last bullets are similar.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, but we had talked about the ability to even do, you know, do a 10-year, 15's really stretching it. We, we talked about that when we went through the CIP items, so I would go with the third bullet and move on.
And should-do, and then what's the last part of that?
You mean protecting property, yeah.
Protect, gotcha. Protecting property. Paid parking program changes. Review rates, amount of fines in line with the other islands. Extend the season year-round. Review and update paid parking program, and then all the stuff in the front.
So, my question is, I mean, are we already locked in for this season, or?
This season we are, because the passes have already gone on sale.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we are, for that we are, but not for the hourly, weekly. That doesn't start till April 1st. And we're not in line with the other islands on those. One of them we are, and one we're not. Anyway, I had that possibly put on the March agenda too, to talk about that as a, something we can do sooner than later.
And there's no budget with this, right? I mean, it's just, we just, I mean, there's a budget, revenue impact, you're right.
I mean, it is an impact to the budget, because it's revenue.
Yep.
So, the third tab kind of encompasses all of them? Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
And then what?
I would say it's a should-do.
I'd say it's nice-to-have, um, but I'll defer to Rick. You've been the parking guy.
Well, again, the original idea behind the paid parking was to, uh, generate revenue to re, repair the pier and pay for the pier property. And, uh, again, I'm, uh, not against year-round parking. I think it would, uh, benefit us, but again, if we're not going to do anything to, uh, to the pier for the next four or five years, I think we should just in paid parking completely, if we're not going to do all the services.
So, it was tied to?
No, it wasn't. It was never. It was started way before they even talked about buying the pier. That's not actually accurate.
Y'all attended the meeting, you didn't know otherwise, but just, all I'm gonna say about it, carry on. You're gonna do what you want to do anyway.
Then let's make the paid parking program changes a nice-to-do and go with the third bullet.
And then the description, is that an amenity also, or?
Yeah, let's just do that.
Okay, then lobbyists review cost-benefit analysis?
That's an amenity, I think.
Well, this is directly related to the budget, if you're spending money on something that you're not getting the value out of. How's that an amenity?
Okay, I guess I was viewing it as, if we didn't have it, there wouldn't be any, that's what we got to figure out, is what would you consider?
That's what I would think the cost-benefit analysis would tell us, whether we're getting our money's worth, so we should do that.
Okay. So, maybe more core service, part of the?
Yeah.
Okay, core service should-do.
Okay, so keep it, it should-do core service?
Yep.
Continue to support and monitor the Lockwood Valley inlet access to the ocean.
What, what?
I know some of the, we don't have to keep everything on this list either. If we decide that that shouldn't be there, then we can take it off.
I guess I'm, I need to understand it better. I mean, it's kind of like monitoring the inlet hazard area. Is that all we're doing, or are we gonna fund, does this have dollars associated with it?
Yes.
Okay.
This is dredging, when the, our share of dredging, right? So, that should be a must-do. Uh, I'm sorry?
I'll be corrected here.
What if we didn't do it? What if we didn't do it?
Let's have some input from the assistant town manager, please.
Yes, it is dredging, but staff would also encourage you to think about this being your third earmarked request, because the million dollars that we used two years ago as an earmark will not get us through the dredging cycle next year, based on what's left in the balance of the core's O and M budget.
So, we only had two already? Is that where we left it the last time? We, we didn't have a third?
Yes.
Because we were talking about fire, but then we couldn't get fire, so this is your suggestion as adding this as a third? Sounds good.
Yep, and we just found out that the core is Winchester'd on their federal appropriation for Lockwood Valley inlet, so that's, it's totally appropriate to bring it to you.
Yeah, they have maybe $400,000 left, but it's not enough to, at, at the daily rate, and usually they're here 15 days a time. It's not enough to get you through a year. So, we would suggest that be your third earmarked request.
And that would be, that would be, um, um, to have money put in the cores budget for the operation of their, uh, the core fleet, and any other contracted operations that they would need.
Okay, so do we have to do anything to get you to put that as our third earmark? Consensus?
Yeah, so, I guess I'm, this is somewhat similar to beach nourishment, in that we know that there's going to be ongoing costs associated with dredging, and we ideally would put them in the SIP or something, have a plan for when we're going to need dredging dollars? I'm just trying to compare it to the beach nourishment.
Unless I'm mistaken, I believe that's in your capital improvement plan. It shows one year at about $383,000. That's when we get the widener, and the next year at about 85, because traditionally that's what we've spent. So, since we have the widener this year, your next year's cost would be 85. Um, that would be in the budget proposal to you, not knowing what cost will shake out per cubic yard, per daily rate, but then also, even though you put the 85 in as a placeholder, you ask for earmarks, so maybe you don't have to use the 85.
So, it's in the SIP?
Yeah, it was there, I remember.
Okay.
As a separate line, and it's not a, yeah, beach nourishment.
So, is there a to-do, or is this just do what we're doing?
Yeah.
Just confirm?
It's our third earmark.
Okay.
So, we probably don't need to leave that on, or do we leave it on?
Yes.
Because we have money going toward some amount that we don't know.
Well, you're gonna need to put some in the budget. Just because it's in the SIP doesn't mean it won't be in the budget.
Okay.
So, how would we want to categorize that one then? Should-do?
Yeah. Do we want to change the wording on that, David, since it's kind of passive? Support and monitor?
He knows what he's, you know what you're gonna do with that, right?
Yeah, sure.
If, then it should be okay.
I, I, I mean, it's fine.
So, we're leaving it as a should-do. Um, then we go down to the finance budget, and we've got balance the budget without raising taxes, no tax increase.
That's the goal. Um, I guess I'm getting tangled up in our goals versus priorities versus objectives versus classifications. Um.
Yeah, I mean, we already had this in our goals, right, when we did through our goals?
Yep.
I'm not sure we need to leave it on here for objectives. I don't know. I could be convinced. I'm not sure we need to leave it on here for objectives. I don't know, I could be convinced that it's.
Well, I think, I mean, to me it's cleaner, this is our list of objectives, what we plan to accomplish, and that's one of the fundamental goals we've got. The first two, maybe more, are our goals.
Yeah, I'm okay with leaving them as goals.
I just see goals and objectives as different things.
So you want me to take it off this list?
I, I, I mean, we have to go back and look at the notes from the last meeting, but I thought we'd passed goals, we'd passed priorities, we, you know, we voted on what our goals were, what our priorities were.
Yeah, I mean, do you want me to write goal next to it and leave it there?
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, that's true. The first two, I think he's saying, for those.
Maintain requi, I'm sorry, did you guys say something after I said?
Well, that was.
That's another goal.
That's another goal.
Okay, the next one, okay. Redefine policy for the capital reserve fund for beach renourishment to restrict its use solely for physical beach renourishment and define the annual revenue streams for implementation during fiscal year '24, '25.
Okay, so this is part, we could almost put this under beach nourishment, because it's the funding part of the program. Yeah, because we, right now for beach nourishment, I think we took that bottom bullet, which was inclusion of beach nourishment plans and funding in the SIP, and this is the funding part.
You want to cross that off?
I don't know, do we want to call it out separate or?
I would leave it, but move it up there under beach nourishment, maybe?
Yeah, maybe combine it with the, the beach nourishment one.
Gotcha. Transfer money from the general fund to the beach and inlet SRF as defined by the existing policy, adherence to fund balance policy for funding beach inlet capital reserve.
So I have that as a must do, since that's a policy, we should be doing that? I know we talked to David about this before, and you said you hadn't done it for the last year or even the year before. Is that something we can have on an agenda item to?
Daniel's working on a budget amendment.
Okay, perfect.
For March.
Perfect, thank you.
So must do?
Yep.
Do you guys want to categorize it further?
Well, beach nourishment is protecting property, so it's part of the beach nourishment.
Property, okay. Replenish beach and inlet funds at an aggressive rate, adhere to the existing fund balance policy, and be part percentage.
I think that's the same thing.
Yeah, that's redundant.
Those are the same.
Okay, I'm gonna cross that one out. Upgrade the budget message document to include details and pie charts on relative department and types of expensive expenses, as well as full details on debt service schedules.
I think we, we talked about that in some of our meetings about different graphs and charts. And this is just tied to the budget message.
Yeah, because the next one, I remember we talked to, about the monthly reports, and this kind of feeds into that.
Yeah, and to me, they're all related to communicating, you know, part of the whole, helping people understand our budget, helping people understand spending. Yeah, and actually, the next one's part of that too, easier to understand, more financial reports.
Okay, so we're leaving them, but how do you want me to categorize them?
So.
No, financial reports don't have anything to do with the budget message.
Right. It's just more about how you're showing the finances. So one is monthly, one is the budget message, so.
Right.
That would be not until the very end, when you do your budget message. So it really depends on, if you could do, I mean, I always had it as a should do, but I don't know if you, if you really even can do it, is the question.
I can write the budget message pretty much any way that it needs to be written. At one point in time, we had add-in for an item, detail relating to debt service schedules in there, and then there was a desire to be more general, delete that and go to windows or an app picture-based type of budget message, so that's been done. I mean, the way that that is written there, that's pretty self-explanatory to me, if that's what you want. But.
I think we can, we should.
But I, but when we talk about better communications, and we talk about easier to understand, but more detail, sometimes that's dichotomous. When you have too much information, you can't understand it. So, you know, communication's a challenge regardless of what arena you're in.
So do you want me to leave it on there, or do you just, he's got the direction?
I, I understand what it means.
Do you want me to leave it?
Leave it, yeah.
Write should do, is that?
Yeah, if you can.
We'll give her the best shot.
So then the next one would be the update the monthly management report at the board meeting to include bar graph of last year monthly year-to-date spend compared to this year monthly year-to-date.
Yeah, and that's really combined with the one below, kind of same thing.
Well, could I segue a moment there on that particular thing?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Just, because Daniel and I were talking about the practical execution of that, and, you know, for financial reports, do we need to have the finance officer doing that? Or would it be more suitable for perhaps that type of information to be captured in a, what's the thing called for the consent agenda? Consent agenda type information. Because if you're waiting for me to give the financial report all the way down to the end, it may, you know, everybody may be asleep, so, you know, what's the, what's the?
Well, I guess, what I thought was this was more focused on what you post on the website. The monthly financials that get posted to the website would just have more of these graphical bar chart.
Okay, see, I totally missed.
Not me, that's not what I meant. I want to see it in the monthly, so that everybody gets it every month when they get their package.
Okay. Where, where do we want to put that on the agenda, is my question?
Doesn't matter to me, as long as it's in the package and people can see it easily.
Consent agenda makes it easier for you, nobody has to talk to it.
Yep, that's nice.
Yeah.
And then if there's questions, you can always pull it out.
Perfect.
When you go to agenda approval time, you can always pull consent agenda items out to be talked to during the agenda.
If it's in the packet, then I guess it doesn't need to be on the, I mean, it'd be on the website deal of the packet, so.
Okay. Heather, you had a comment, I think?
No, it's fine.
You sure?
Yep, no, I'm okay.
David, is that easy?
Can do.
Okay.
When can we start that?
Probably March should be best.
Perfect, thanks. No, you don't have to do it today.
So do you want to take those two items off, since it's really board meeting stuff?
I think so, yeah.
Then 90% budget execution, including contingency items, spend what you asked for.
Yeah, that's just me. You know, you guys ask for a budget, we give you a budget. Sometimes there's a lot of money left over. Just, let's see if we can execute what we're asking for, and that's, that's just a goal.
A goal.
Okay.
Um, I get that, but having, um, done tours in the federal government, that's got a little different nuance to it than what I think here at the local government have, because that, that translates to use it or lose it in the federal, in the federal government, it does.
Yeah, well, that doesn't tran, not here, no, that's not.
I know what we're talking about there, is execute the program.
Yeah, that's all that is, David. That's, I understand use it or lose it.
Because inevitably, that will distill down to department level and it'll be painful. A desire to Winchester the budget, but.
I guess this is kind of along the line too, you know, we've got all these should do's here, and I don't know that it's within the capacity to get them all done. It's a lot. So, you know, if, if we do a budget to do all these things and it's just not within the capability, then maybe we don't need to bite off so much, but that's just a goal.
So we had some goals up there, Heather, can we just add this to the goal?
Yep.
Those first two bullets, and then that will be a goal also?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. That's not something that, I mean, that's what it is.
Okay, then assess water and sewer reserve funds to ensure they can satisfy short and long-term needs?
Yeah, that's me again. I don't know enough about those funds or what the long-term needs are. Just give them a look and see if the money we're putting away for the rainy day is suitable. Given the increased cost of everything, what Chris anticipates, we may need to repair, replace, possibly upsize, things of that nature, just a, a look at it to see if it's adequate. Does that make sense?
This appears to be similar to, you know, we talked about the SIP going out maybe 15 years and having, you know, for beach nourishment and other ones, you know, here's the funding that's needed to meet these requirements going forward, is that?
It, it ties into the SIP, but just to go take a look at it, I mean, things are much more expensive these days. I, things are getting older. I don't know if we're reaching capacity limits. Just to give it a look and see, is what we're putting away for future capital projects under these reserve funds sufficient for what we think's coming, given our, what we know today about the price of things, like pump station two being so expensive?
Okay, so, I mean, is it a one-time analysis to come up? Because the SIP to me is kind of a long-term financial plan, and we got a bucket out there to spend money, and we may push it down, we may move it up, but it's our vision. This, is this just an analysis of?
This is my goal, to put a little emphasis on water and sewer, because it's critical infrastructure, to make sure we give it a good look, and we're doing what we need to, so we don't get caught short should something arise or we have to increase something.
Okay, so it's more a one-time?
Yeah.
Analysis, okay.
So do you want to classify it as a should do or a goal or?
Let's, let's make it a goal. I feel we've asked a lot of staff.
Then the next title is policies and procedures, and we have an overall review of personnel policies must be undertaken with the intent to propose changes that will improve staff retention and development. You guys want to keep that one on?
That one's not mine. David, what do you think? I mean, it's your staffing stuff. Do you think there's anything that needs to be done at this point?
No, I do not.
Then let's take it off.
Then succession planning for town staff.
That one was mine, because I hear all these people saying I'm retiring in three years, four years, and just want to make sure we got our bases covered. If, if some very key resources are actually going to retire in the short term, what's the plan? So, putting it out there.
Since individuals, um, personal retirement plans are personnel, um, in, or it's personal personnel information, it's not something that's appropriate for public discussion.
Agreed.
We take that off.
Okay.
And then we've got evergreens, balance the budget.
I think we had that in the bullets.
Yeah, you can.
That's by law, y'all.
Okay, so what I'll do is I will make this into another piece of paper that takes all the changes, and I'll bring it to the next workshop. And I think we had questions on the next workshop, exactly what, you want me to guess?
Yeah, go ahead. Wait, can I just ask you first? So are you gonna put like must do and then that, and then should do, and then the list, and then nice to have, and then the list?
Yeah, I'll change the title, so it's.
Yeah, and that way we can start prioritizing in, in each of those.
Yes, if that works for everybody.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the next budget meeting, which looks like it is on March 8th. And I guess we were talking and we're working on it, but what exactly, for the department input and budget requests, that's the next little subtitle that we're on for the month of, month of March, are we looking to get our budget worksheets with our actual expenses? Or are you looking for us to come and give us your big request and kind of list like if Jeremy wants a detective, you want the detective, you want his radios? What are you looking from us, for us, for next week, is what we're, well, two weeks from now?
Two weeks.
Could you read that again? What was the description you've got on that?
The description of the title says department input and budget requests. So to be honest, we were, Christie and Chris are up first, and they've been going through and looking at what they're looking at, but we don't usually do it this early, so we're pretty loose. So we didn't know if you were looking at more of just a general summary of what we're doing, or do you want the actual budget format from us?
I want what you want for next year.
But like, just as, kind of like a list as a, this is what we want, this is how much we're expecting it to be? Or are you trying to get his actual expense budget worksheets that we usually develop and?
We're ahead of the, we're, I see it as a step before the worksheets, but it's, you know, we've gone through, this was last year, this is where we're at, year-to-date, here's where we think we're gonna be, so now we're starting to look forward and say, we think this is gonna go up, or, you know, not, not at the line spreadsheet level, but bigger picture.
Just the big, like?
Big ticket items.
Bigger ticket, you know, we're gonna have something that we anticipate coming, and here's what it is, and here's the magnitude of it, and that's my thought.
Like, I was throwing Jeremy into the bus, but if you look at the governing body, honestly, I don't have any requests, so mine wouldn't, you're not looking for the line-by-line at this point, are you, or?
I was, but maybe that's not realistic, because, yeah, I mean, if you don't have anything, then I would expect your budget's gonna be pretty much the same as last year.
Right, like governing body, admin, we're all simple. Tim, Jeremy, all of us are gonna be pretty simple. It's Chris and Jeremy, or Jeremy, you, Christie, and Chris that are gonna have the more bigger ticket items to.
There ain't no way I can make this schedule, every one by one, and have sleep better, you don't want that.
We just don't, like, we don't have, insurance is not prepared yet, it's too early, like, we're working on our quote. We don't have the main numbers yet, is, we're just, we want to deliver what you want, but we're just trying to.
Make sure we know what you want.
Well, and what I'm hearing is, is what maybe perhaps we wanted, particularly based on what Chris says, is it's not appropriate to get it at the next meeting.
What we typically do, what we've done for as long as I can remember, is we usually go in and we do the departmental requests, and they give them to David, to Daniel, whoever's working on it, but then, like, we'll, you have a revenue workshop coming up, so they need to make everything balance, the revenues and the expenses, so it makes more sense to just tell you what their requests are, but then to bring the sheets back when we've already talked about what revenues we're expecting.
Would it make more sense to change it to revenue?
To move up the revenue.
I'm just asking you on the A, because we haven't talked about that at all. Would it make more sense to do, and that gives them more time?
Chris, did you have something you're trying to say?
That's moving it up a whole month. If I have something of the, about ordinary, like big ticket items, quick, clear, now, there's gonna be something needed, right, we all need to talk to some people, before I start trying to pile anything else up. As far as that revenue and all that, because I can make a page, make a guess.
No, no, we can't, we, we're not gonna be able to have revenue.
So it's too early in the year for that, but looking, if I understand, Heather, we could look at the bigger ticket items? And if there's, yeah.
We normally get that to David earlier anyways, before they actually go through and get all the numbers and stuff. So that's actually keeping in line with our normal process. We're just kind of giving you a brief of, you know, if there's something that Christie puts in there that you guys completely don't agree with, it would actually make sense to tell us now before we try to go and balance.
Yeah, before you do the work, yeah, absolutely.
So if it kind of just be more of like a loose, this is what we're looking for, and, sorry, I missed print that up. I must have left it on my desk with the stuff. I'm looking at the schedule, that's what everybody's looking at on my thing. But that would still keep us online, because then in the beginning of April, we'll be talking about revenues, and then there's actually one on April 30th that says expense summary, which you could look at the whole budget as a whole, all of us at the same time at that point. So I mean, it would keep us in line with. So I mean, it would keep us in line with where we're normally at at this point.
I think, I like your recommendation. Let's look at the big ticket items, see if there's anything that, A, we think is missing, or something, or just, it's a hard no, so that would be appropriate to me.
Do we have to have three meetings to do that?
I don't know if we have three meetings on the schedule, Rick.
So you have, on March 8, we have Public Works and Parks and Recreation. On the 13th, we've got governing body admin inspections, police and the canal funds. Then March 18, we have CIP and projects. So technically, the CIP and projects, I would assume, would kind of just be included throughout the rest of our requests? Am I right, or am I wrong? So you might be able to eliminate that one?
And so, we're looking at April, is there any way we can pull some of the April into March?
I don't think so, because I think what he's saying is they're not going to have, like, the state distributor, they're not going to know the numbers yet to give you your revenues. And it's hard for us to try to balance anything without knowing what we're going to balance against. So, because the only thing that's in April is in April, we've got the, we've got a meeting for general fund revenue and tax rate. Then we have one for the B part fund revenue, and then we have one at the end of the month that says budget meeting expense summary, which is where we would have the line-by-line.
And that's April 30?
Okay, I think our plan was that we would kind of give the high-level guidance, and then April's their month to put the sheets together.
Based on what we've said, do you see a way we can reduce the number of meetings, get more into a date? What do you guys think?
So I would think that if you leave March 8 with Kristy and Chris, and then on March 13, I think you could do the rest of us, and also include CIP and projects, because I think the rest of us will be fairly quick.
Let's try to do that.
Okay.
And then, I mean, honestly, if you look into April, if you did want to combine more, I know we're not there, you could probably do all the revenue on one day. We usually, we've always done revenue on one day, but that's not a must, it's up to you guys.
I'm all for getting done sooner, as long as we get a thorough job done.
Everybody likes revenue.
But so we'll just go through, we'll, we'll do the March 8 one would be the next budget meeting, and it would just be Kristy and Chris. Sorry, I totally hijacked that meeting, and I forgot.
That's fine.
Well, it's all related to the budget stuff, so.
Is our motion adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for being here. We have the privilege of being back in session at 5:00 for the regular meeting.